For coming, it's seven o'clock, so please, please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I accept a motion for the consent agenda.
Excuse me, did you try to light the phones on?
Yep. Yes.
Move for approval.
Second. Move and second. Need further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next we have a single action item regarding resolution of appreciation for the Silver Fox Foundation. I'd like to go ahead and read that. Whereas the members of the Silver Falls School Board take this means to express their appreciation of the Silver Fox Foundation and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation has supported the activities and athletics of Silver Falls School District for more than thirty years and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation is a philanthropic and volunteer-based nonprofit organization whose mission is to providing support to all schools and district and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation has provided support for school-related activities and projects including athletic school scoreboards, Lego robotics, band, and choir projects, annual sponsor of girls' state and boys' state, facility planning, original architectural design of the high school athletic area, and most recently, planning and fundraising for the McGinnis Field Turf Upgrade Project and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation has provided support as a funding flow-through organization for numerous school and community-based projects such as Project Graduation, Future Fox's Pop Warner and Cheer, Silverton Middle School Parent Teacher Club, Silverton High School Marching Band Uniforms, Community Kiosk, and Silverton Skate Park and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation is governed by a local board including many original directors who strongly believe in giving back to the community and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation has supported post-high school, college, and career opportunities through annual student scholarships and whereas the Silver Fox Foundation maintains tireless efforts and total commitment to the school district communities as a trademark, as trademark characteristics, therefore be resolved that the Silver Falls School Board recognizes the decades-long contribution of the Silver Fox Foundation and encourages all members of the school district to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. So do we have a motion? So moved. It's a moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Also, favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I'd like to go ahead and recognize some of the members of the Silver Fox Foundation that are here, would that guys like to stand for a moment? Really appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you very much again.
Mr. Chairman, I think there may be a representative that wanted to share a few comments with the board this evening.
Oh, great.
Is that right? Chuck, was that you?
Yeah.
Come on, come on up Chuck, sign in.
Volunteer.
Might not know the process.
I was just informed when I came in the door, so, um, just a little historical perspective. The foundation began, as you said, over thirty years ago and actually kind of evolved at about the end of my coaching at the high school as the head football coach and we had a lot of people who felt that we needed some kind of an infrastructure put together to support the community and the school district in terms of being a nonprofit and a foundation that would support not just athletics but all activities and that's been our goal and we hope that we can continue to do that in the future.
Thanks Chuck, it's been very successful.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite our student representatives Vanessa and Rachel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, we'll start with our clubs. NHS just had a SAC event this previous Friday and our ceremony will be tomorrow at seven o'clock at the high school.
And our Gay Straight Alliance had a bake sale at First Friday.
And Link Crews continuing to help the class of 2020 feel comfortable.
And ASB is preparing for Battle Month. Committees for different fundraisers are figuring out the dates for their events.
Now, we have our sports. Football had a great win against Corvallis on Friday, it was a close game, twenty-three to twenty-one, and they have a home game this Thursday against South Albany.
Our cross-country had a meet at McMinnville this previous Friday and will be running again at Wilsonville this upcoming Friday.
Volleyball had a tournament at Glencoe over the weekend and right now they're playing at home against Dallas.
Our boys soccer lost against Woodburn on Thursday, but today we have a home game against South Albany.
And girls soccer beat Woodburn at home on Thursday and today they're playing away at South Albany.
Thank you.
Any questions for these ladies? Thanks for coming, appreciate it. Okay, this next we go ahead and have audience with visitors like to read a statement before we open it up. We'd like to welcome you to the regular business meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. Second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Would anybody like to address the board? Guess I went through that for nothing. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to discussion items. Proposed revisions to policies DJC bidding requirements, GBM staff complaints, and IGBBA Identification of Talented and Gifted Students, these are all second readings. Any comments? All right, then deletion of policy IGBBB Identification Talented Gifted Students Among Non-Typical Populations, this is also second reading. Proposed revision to policy DJ District Purchasing, it's a first reading. Any comments on that one? Okay, then the charter revisions as a result of these...
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt just for a moment, I apologize. I did want to clarify for the benefit of the board, I put this in your memo, that policy GBMA, which is, you had a first reading last month on that policy, it's a new language, statutory language, specific to whistleblowing as it relates to employees, actually following conversation with Wally as well, withdrew that policy, we have given some additional consideration with our legal counsel, the Hungerford Law Firm on that, and while it's an OSBA proposed policy, there are a number of questions that were raised and so based upon Wally's recommendation at the last meeting, we took it to the Hungerfords and so I anticipate having a revised version at your November meeting, but I do owe it to OSBA to let them know that we have some questions and also a little bit more time to help have the Hungerfords help us vet those changes, so that will be returning, but that's why you don't see it right now.
There'll be a second reading at that time, at the next meeting. Correct?
I'm not certain about that, depending upon the revisions, if they're significant enough, we may have to start over.
Okay. All right, charter revisions as a result of the school site change for community roots, charter schools in our packet, any comments or concerns on that? Okay, there'll be an action item later this... What's that Tim?
Looks good to me.
Okay, there'll be an action item later this evening. Thought exchange, public engagement to electronic results. Candy.
I'm gonna come out, I have a few slides to share with you. I'm sorry, just a second, I seem to have lost, blink, so I'm gonna bring it right back up and then I'll... So, first I want to start off by saying that the, it looks like I did, here to begin with, there we go. I want to start off by saying that this is a electronic public engagement process that you, as a district, we administered last April and May. It's a very busy time in our school district, as you recall. However, at the same time, this has been the latest or the next extension of our efforts as a district and you as a board, reaching out to the community and seeking input and generally, within the case of thought exchange, we're trying to do this on an annual basis to allow some opportunity for the public to give us input. Just as a quick reminder, what we heard a few years ago, and this was admittedly during our attempts at getting a bond election passed in this community, there were quite a few things that the community shared with the school district and one of those was specific to increasing the frequency of communication and giving plenty of opportunity for the community to give us some feedback, you as a board and us as a school district in general. Feedback at times other than when there are controversial items going on or specifically, I can remember this from a public forum that we have, when there's not a bond election campaign occurring. And so, this, the thought exchange application, I think is a very effective tool. It's not a survey specific to metrics that you generally would see from a survey, but rather, and even the folks from Thought Exchange will say this, is that it's a method for asking questions of the community intentionally vague, three questions, you know, what are we doing well, where can we improve, what other input do you have to share, and then they in turn capture all of that feedback and as the title suggests, they take the thoughts, look for themes, similarities in the thoughts, and then send the information back out to the public through a second phase, and they call it a starring process, where you actually add stars to it, which gives some kind of indication of the importance of that topic. One of the beauties of this process is that if I'm as a participant, don't think of something in the district or a particular school in the district, somebody else does, it comes back to me in phase two, I say, oh yeah, that's even more important to me than what I suggested the first time. So I know that's just a quick summary and quick overview for the four of you, but I think it's important for you and for the public to hear how this process works. So, there is a lot of information here and I'm not going to take a ton of time tonight, but I am going to ask that you, you as board members, take some time to review this information. This will be released to the public in a web, with a web address tomorrow, we'll send out an email blast to our listserv, we'll also put it on Facebook and on the district webpage. And the intent is for a few things, for the public to take a look and to see what some of the information is that we're receiving, for you to take a look and see what some of the information is that we're receiving, and then I think for us as administration within the school district, for us to share these results with our respective schools and for us to look for those developed themes or priorities that we should give consideration to as priorities for people in the school district. So before we get into the specific results, and the display here is not ideal, but when you open this up, you will see that there are, there are lots of, this is a dedicated webpage first of all, to Silver Falls School District, but there are lots of things on the left, in the left column that I'm gonna start at the bottom and go up. First of all, is just very quick to what I just described with, with the process, again, sharing, starring, the discovering, and then I think this is also important for you to see is specific to what's the demographic, demographic of those who participated were. We had, and I'm pleased with this because again, I think it's another beauty of this process, we had almost seven hundred people participate, they provided one thousand three hundred and seventy-one thoughts, and then those one thousand seven hundred, three hundred and seventy-one thoughts were again distributed to us as a community, which resulted in over almost fifty-one thousand stars, which is a way for an individual to prioritize those thoughts as they go through. Now, I also think that there's just something unique about the demographics that I want to point out to you as you take a look at this information and again, on your own, after it's released to the public tomorrow. We did have a very good turnout of parents, four hundred and fifty of the six hundred eighty-eight folks. We had quite a few staff members, two hundred and thirteen, who participated in this and I, and I share that with you because I think it's important to recognize that a third of the results, or almost a third of the results are, are from staff members and you'll see that with some of the comments, some of the thoughts that are, are shared. I was a little surprised at the, those who, these by the way are all self-identified folks, sixteen people who consider themselves just specific community members and not as a parent or guardian, and then two students participated as well. I think we as a district, one of the takeaways from this is to do everything we can to promote this process and get as many people as we can signed up for our email within the district because email is how we distribute this in the first place. It's also on the website, but it's something that we want people to participate in, so I'd love to see the community member input a little bit higher. So, just taking a look at some of the other very specific things, I think it's important by the way to take a look at all three. Things that people appreciate, things that we could improve, and additional thoughts about the schools and district. Surely, click on these, but those number three, number four, and number five really just give examples of what that looks like. From my perspective, and the most valuable part of this are two, two of these items, number seven and number eight, and I'll just click on number seven, the district results, and... It's important to note that the district results are a compilation of school results. So, as an example, if, if you, when you logged in and took the engagement process and you identified yourself as a parent or guardian from Victor Point School, you were asked to respond to the questions specific to Victor Point School, or Scotts Mills, or Butk Creek, or Pratt and, or whatever it may be. All of those thoughts then were combined into a composite. So there are, all of the school-specific results are here as well and principals have taken a look at those and they will also be going over those with staff and parent club as we move ahead, but the, the district-specific results are that composite. And I think it's very easy to jump right to the assumption that because something in this case like facilities and buildings has one thousand two hundred and thirty-three stars identified with it, that's a composite of stars that are the result of concerns as well as those that are a result of commendations or things that people appreciate about this school district. And there's plenty of ways that you can surely navigate through, through this information, it's pretty intuitive platform. If you were to click on these, oops, I'm sorry, right away, you would see an opportunity to scroll through the data and you would see the actual thoughts that that person contributed, this is, this is someone's thought, the first one, improved maintenance throughout the building. We have things like no hot water in the boys' and girls' locker rooms that need to be fixed for sanitary health reasons, the alarm system does not work right, that's a safety issue. That's one comment by one person who captured it in this engagement process and it's interesting to note, if you take a look at the number of stars in the next, in this column, that the stars indicate the number of people who agreed generally with that statement, one way or another, and that they combined it into, into this being a concern. And you can also see where this, where this thought originated and that came from someone in the Victor Point and Silvercrest Elementary School area. By the way, we combined those for logistical purposes last year because we had the same principal at both schools. And then you can, you can scroll through, again, you'll see clearly there's, this is again what people would like to see, suggested improvements for, for our school district related to facilities and buildings. I think it's also important to note, as you take a look at this information, that this is a snapshot in time, one moment on one day, in the case of an individual who submitted this over a couple of days, if they did it over a couple of days or even longer, but it was a period of time, like I said at the beginning, when a lot was going on in this school district and anything could be influencing the members of the public one way or the other in a way of suggesting some items that could be improved upon and those that can be, those that are compliments. So, take a look at, at a couple of the other items as you go through this. Parking and transportation, this one is another one that got a lot of, a lot of attention from a facility standpoint, or at least from a, from a public input standpoint, and again, these were specific to schools. You'll see that if you were to click on the Central Howell results, there are a number of folks who commented on their concerns about parking and safety at Central Howell School and you'll see it reflected in the district results. However, you see a number of comments here from, in this case, from someone who's had a child or had some connection to Eugene Field School and is talking about the transition to Mark Twain School and the need for pickup and drop-off improvement. So you can see very quickly how this is a lot of information that can give us some pretty clear direction, shouldn't say clear direction, I think some direction as a school district, but the clarity is something that principals have to identify and prioritize specific to their school and we as a school district, I believe, have to say what is it that are the priorities that came out of these results as well. The, I'm gonna go to take a look at...
Andy, appears that there's, just saw little snapshots there, but appears that there's several comments regarding maintenance and that type of thing at the schools. Will the principals be taking that back to our maintenance staff or how do they get...
Yeah, the maintenance staff is actually, is actually, has received this information as well, in fact, Warren Stanley and I had a conversation about it.
They're going through it all then?
They are, yes, yeah, again, there's a lot of information here. And the other piece that I think is just important to recognize, Wally, is that, is that the, those items that are specific to maintenance may also be a perception or an understanding of that individual at that point. Some of these may be entirely justified. I'm a little concerned about the hot water at one or more of our schools, that's for sure, and if that's the case, we're gonna find out what that problem is and we're gonna fix it. With that, however, if there's someone who's concerned about a specific facility matter that, that has been already addressed, or the person just misunderstood it potentially, then we want to be certain that we clarify what we need to do with that, if anything at all. The other piece that's pretty important to note and is that any, any of this information, and I shared this with the principals last week as well, but any of this information is going to be more valuable for us as a school district and for us as we make decisions about priorities if we can find other data or other metrics or other information that helps validate that it's a concern. There could be something here that we say, oh yeah, absolutely, that's a concern, but if there's something related to, let's say, a curriculum or nutrition or, or traffic flow or facilities, or even a perception of how classrooms operate or administrative decisions are made, it's incredibly important that, that we not only find out as much as we can about that information, but also find some other information that helps us validate it to prove really the definition of the issue, if it's even an issue, number one, but second of all, to find out how big of a priority it is. If we see it repeatedly in an instrument like this and we have some other information based upon, let's say, principal conversations with parents or, or public input that we hear at, say, an open house, then that adds more validity to that concern as compared to a snapshot of one item spoken by one person on this engagement process that fifty other people happen to say, yes, that's an important thing for us too. So, it's just something we need to be very, very attentive to as we move ahead. I want to show something else here though to you because there, there are plenty of things that, that folks like contribute in a way that will help us improve as a district. I also think it's important to, to recognize that there are lots of folks in this community who feel very good about what we're doing as a school district. And it's question number two, what are some things that you appreciate about our school district this year? And one of the first things that stood out for me is, is that when you, when you take a look at the results, and in this case, trying to fold in the metric of some sort and if the sorted by stars number, or excuse me, the number of stars is, is any indication of how important these things are to the people who contributed to them, we have, in the case of their compliments of teachers and staff, and I won't go through all of those, you can do that on your own, there are four thousand one hundred and one stars that people put to that, and if you recall, just to the concerns about facilities, in the last slide, it was like one thousand two hundred and some odd stars placed upon that. So, the reason I share that with you is because while it's easy for us to find plenty of ways for us to improve as a school district, and you'll hear me say this repeatedly, and I'll say this as long as I'm superintendent, we will always have that. We will always have plenty of areas to improve and to grow and that's what we do as a school district. But what's equally important and maybe even more so in many cases is how satisfied people are with this school district. So please, be certain to take a look at how people feel about what you're doing as a school district, and you'll see there's plenty of compliments about teachers and staff, administration, school choice, and look at that, number ten, facilities and buildings, you got two hundred and twenty-two stars saying complimentary things about what you do as a school district from a facility standpoint. So, that's where I'm, I'm going to end my comments and thoughts on this because easily a person could spend an hour on this and I encourage you to do it from the comfort of your own home, when you have your laptop or your computer in front of you and you take a look at these, these results after we send out the public website tomorrow. And Mr. Chair, my only suggestion would be at some point at a work session in the next month or two, or possibly one of our regular sessions, this may want to be brought up as a topic of conversation again. I did ask the principals at each school to find themes that were consistent with the information they had received as well and identify two or three items specific to their school that would be priorities for them for this year. And I think we as, as a school district have an obligation to do the same thing, it's just gonna take us a little while to get through all of this data.
That'd be a great topic, thank you.
You bet. If I can, Mr. Chair, I'm next on the...
Yeah, go right ahead, so district enrollment and district safety awareness week.
Let me find that again, I apologize. Well, each one of you has, you've received your district enrollment figures for, for the year and what I want to share with you, what I want to share with you is, again, something that is not very surprising, in fact, it's a little bit days old. This district, if you talk, begin with the year 2000 to today, 2016, is by definition experiencing flat enrollment. We continue to experience flat enrollment. I will say, over the last two or three years, we've seen a slight increase in enrollment growth in this district, which, which is good, it's much better than the alternative, which is declining enrollment and nobody wants to experience that. So, I, I think it's important to note that while we are staying relatively flat, fifty, sixty more kids maybe than we had a couple of years ago, we live in a school district which continues to grow. The city of Silverton is seeing quite a bit of new construction and even our rural areas are seeing new construction, we see that recognized in the construction excise tax revenue. With that said, my belief anyway, is that while people are moving to this area and the population is growing overall, the enrollment numbers are not increasing because the, there is, is, or we are experiencing a shift of the number of students in children and families or we're having an older population move to our area. I really don't know what it is, but it's part of the reason that I suggested to you, which you've adopted as a board goal, to administer a demographic study this year so we can find out a little bit more about what's going on. We have to better understand our population before we go into any kind of facility planning in the near or distant future to be able to understand what's going on.
Yeah, I think the last study we did several years ago indicated that they're getting more of a retirement type, folks coming, moving into the community versus, versus young families. Also, I think if we were to take our transfers out of other districts, out of this equation, we'd probably see slightly declining enrollment.
Let's just do that.
Oh, there you go.
So, here's annual enrollment with and without transfers for the last five years or six years, you can see it's been a parallel pattern and took a little drop this year. I put those as a proportion of total enrollment. I put those as a proportion of total enrollment, and it's hovering right at 5.1% this year. We were as low as 5% two or three years ago, but anywhere between 5 and 6% of your total enrollment are transfers from out of district. And that, by the way, that's net transfers. So I believe this year we have about 380 students have transferred into this district, and about 150-ish or so that have transferred out of our district. So, a good information for you to consider as we move ahead, again, I'm pleased that we do have some, some growth. We are keeping a close eye on a couple little hot pockets. You know, we have a very large class at Scotts Mills School, in the middle of the middle school right now. Kirsten Jorgensen has done a nice job of responding to that. She anticipated it coming. We also have, even though they're uniform, some large classes at Robert Frost, I believe, in the fifth grade, and we also have one or two large classes up at Victor Point School. Keeping a pretty close eye on those to be certain. And again, large, the Scotts Mills example is the largest at 38, in that blended seventh, eighth grade class. She has 1.2 teachers assigned to that class, and also has a couple of EAs assigned to that class to help minimize the impact. But in the cases of Robert Frost and Victor Point, we're talking about 30 kids or so in classes. So, I think you have to ask yourself, is that manageable? Depends upon what grade level it is. If we're talking middle schools, a little bit more palatable, has some larger class sizes, as compared to your intermediate or elementary class numbers. So, again, we're keeping a close eye on things, and I commend your principals. They've done a very, very nice job, because they have a tool with their transfer approval process to be able to buffer that. And any of these larger classes that we have have been unexpected, either unexpected move-ins over the summer, or as in the case of Scotts Mills, we knew that that large bubble was coming through, and Kirsten has done a nice job of addressing it. So that's some very quick information on enrollment and where we are as a school district. So, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, Andy, I'm just looking, looking at some of the data on the, on the class sizes in the elementary schools. You look at like the, from fourth, fifth through eighth grades, you've got a lot of the class sizes up in the 300s. And then you look, we look at the kindergartens through third grades, and we're down, like kindergarten's only 243, first grade 260. And so, I mean, are we, are we actually looking at a potential decline coming up? And just looking at what, what we see, you know, those are going to work their way into high schools, unless you get a bunch of move-ins.
Right.
I, I find that interesting. I didn't expect to see that.
Sure. I think it's a little more pronounced this year than we've seen in the past, Tom. I think we need to keep a pretty close eye on that. When, when you think about the proportion of students that are approved as transfers, there's a tendency for there to be a higher percentage of transfers the higher the grade levels, which is just an interesting dynamic. I, I don't, I don't entirely get it, but it's also one of the things that we discovered when we made the determination that our K-1, 2 students would all fit at Mark Twain, because we banked on the fact that our kindergarten numbers are generally smaller than they are by the time they get to third or fifth grade, when we get more transfers approved, and there's a little bit more flexibility. I think there's general, some, generally some protection of that as well. Principals don't approve the higher class numbers of kindergarten for transfers. They try to keep those class numbers as low as possible for a variety of reasons, and I think that's just good management.
So, yeah, it makes sense, because you wouldn't want to approve a transfer at a lower grade, and then all of a sudden you're overcrowded, and you don't want to have to rescind somebody.
Exactly.
It's best to be cautious. Okay, that's a good explanation of that.
Okay.
Safety week?
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's just a placeholder. 17 through the 21st of October is our school-wide district safety awareness week, and administrators are meeting tomorrow morning to discuss more about that, but there'll be drills and plenty of activities, and lots of communication going on about safety in schools specific to that week as we start off the year.
Good, thanks, Andy. All right, Mrs. Stevens, transportation update.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on the information I gave you two weeks ago with regard to transportation, how we're doing with our transition from First Student to Durham. I'm pleased to announce that the number of phone calls continue to dwindle exponentially as the weeks progress, so we're happy about that. And the calls I'm taking now are mostly simple logistic issues that they're needing help with, and maybe some practices that are rooted in how we've done things for 25 years, and so the new company's trying to figure out what we're doing. So, we also had April Murphy, our positive behavior support specialist, meet with the bus company today to begin a plan for training our drivers in how to use positive behavior supports when they're working with children, so they're using the same language and reinforcing positive behaviors in the same manner that our teachers and the rest of our staff does. So we're excited to have that training for them. That's not ever anything that they've been provided with the school, so we're excited for that partnership, and we think we'll see payoffs with regard to kids having the same message with whatever person they're dealing with with regard to this school district. The final item is that John and his crew continue to assess our routes, and I've asked him to have a proposal to me by the end of the month, so that I can provide that to Mr. Belando, who can then bring it forward to the board, with the idea that if we have to make adjustments with routes, including adding buses to our services, I would prefer to do that in November fairly quickly, so that we can get that under our belt before we go into the holiday season, and weather issues, and all of those things. So, I have a commitment from him and the regional manager that they'll have any kind of proposal and associated costs with those proposals to me by the end of the month.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad it's improving.
Yeah, I, I think so. I think just took a little more time than any of us had anticipated with the change in the schools and reconfigurations of who's going where, and what's it look like.
Sure. Any questions for Andy? All right, thank you. Okay, we have the Charter School Annual Report from Bethany Charter School, Karen Bukai.
Oh, Mr. Chair, you have a financial report.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Steve, my hand report.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
That's all right, that's all right. Everybody's waiting for this. Well, the good news is the financial statements for the first quarter of the new fiscal year are tracking just, just fine, and we're really just getting going, obviously, getting into September here, and so, so we're doing, doing just fine there, as compared to what we had budgeted. The bad news is, is the, the PERS Board has now adopted their 2017-19 rates. They did that on Friday, September 30th, and we've been talking about this for a year, year and a half now, and knew it was coming, and they, and they, they didn't disappoint. Our, for our district specifically, the Tier 1 and Tier 2 rates went from where we're currently at, is 11.47% of payroll, which will last through the end of this, this school year, and that will increase to 17.08% payroll, beginning on July 1st of next year. And the observed rate, or Tier 3, is jumping from 6.78% of payroll to 11.75% of payroll. So, between those two rates, we're, we're jumping five to five and a half percentage points between the two. If you take the average of that and multiply 5.2% of our budgeted payroll for this year, that equates to between $900,000 to $1 million per year increase next biennium in PERS costs, just in the general fund, which is just over 50% increase in our PERS costs. So, it's, it's a big number, really not, not really different than, than what we expected, maybe, maybe slightly higher, but we knew it was going to be 40 to 50% increase there.
That's about what we expected, actually.
What's that?
That we expected around $1 million, and we were guessing a while back.
Yeah, absolutely. And unfortunately, just the way the system is set up for this round, the school districts experienced a little higher increase than cities and counties, but, but everybody's getting hit hard by this. And again, just as a reminder, the, this, this round of rates is based on the 2014 and 2015 calendar year investment performance, which we know both of those years did not meet the 7.75% assumed earnings rate that the PERS system has. And then also, we couple that with the, the portions of the reform that was reversed in the, in the, in the state Supreme Court. So those two things both contributed to, to this, to this rate increase. And, you know, unless we see huge investment performance for 2016 and 2017, and I know we're almost all the way through 2016...
It hasn't been huge.
Right, exactly. Then we can expect also to see an increase, maybe not to this magnitude, but an increase for the 1921 rates as well. But that's, it's still too early to tell, but they're, they're talking about that already as well, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Steve? All right, Karen. So we do have their report in, in our packet.
Well, I got sent in, so what, beyond the report, what would you like?
Wow. Did a little bit of research on the numbers, and the performance of the students in Bethany regarding math and math and sciences around, is approximately average for our district, so doing a fine job. But since you're kind of focused on ag, I would have kind of expected your math and science to be a little bit on the upper end of things. Can you explain some things that maybe you're doing to help improve that?
They're reworking the curriculum a little bit, going back to standard curriculums and Common Core, and part of the difficulty we have with test results is it's a different grouping test, tested each year being compared, so it's, we don't have the scores for the same group. You have to look at the previous year, and so that...
Sure, so you think some of it might be due to the students you have?
Yeah, and we had some parents opt out as well, so that didn't help scores.
Any questions from her report? Concerns? Anything you need from the board?
Don't think so. We're very pleased to have our association with you guys, so.
Okay, I think it's been going well.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim. How'd your auction go? Just a quick question, but just curious.
I think they made about $6,000 gross on the auction this, in the spring. So it was a little bit less this year, but we got new committee working on it, so they're hoping for the better this next year, so.
Good. I was just going to suggest that you've had, we've had some good conversation recently about the facilities of Bethany Charter School, and, and traffic flow, and things like that. Karen, can you comment a little bit on that, on, on how your board is feeling about that, and any aspirations that you have to improve some of that, or change some of that?
Well, the latest is we've been talking with the owner of the fields surrounding us, and he's proposed a land swap with part of our lower area in exchange for a section that's up by the road. And so, that's something to maybe explore further. We're also trying to get him to agree to a gate so we can utilize the area that belongs to Bethany, that's right next to the fence at the playground for teacher parking, and so that would clear up the parking lot more. We do have the flashing light, and we do have the...
Which is a huge improvement.
And we do have the staff out monitoring, drop-off and pickup, and try to keep traffic moving through there, and safety concerns, they're trying their best to keep track of that, so.
How would you utilize that steep area?
We might have to do some fill, but we could use the steep area for parking.
Wow, it's really steep right now.
Which side of the school are you talking about?
That would be the west, the west side.
West side, yeah.
Okay.
I guess personally, I'd encourage you guys to purchase the school, and you can do everything you want with it. It gets tricky when you guys are a tenant, basically, of that building.
We, we've talked about it, but since the charter contract reads that if we go belly up, you guys get everything anyway, it's not fiscally advantageous for us to purchase.
Well, if you have a different proposal, I think it would be, be interesting to listen, hearing from you.
So, well, we keep tossing possibilities, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Karen? Thank you. All right, Nancy Griffith, Silverton Middle School. First report from Silverton Middle School.
Yeah, sorry.
So yes, this is my first report for Silverton Middle School. Just looking at the report Andy gave on the total numbers, we did lose one seventh grader since the beginning of October, so we're at 449 students right now. We just gained another basic skills student and another structured learning program student, so those are starting to fill up, so we're working with our teachers on that. We have some new faces, oh, and that says Mark Twain, sorry, that should say Silverton Middle School. It's, I'm still getting used to it sometimes, I want to say that. So we do have three really great hires. A.J. Buckles is coming to us from Sublimity, and is like he's always been there, so it's pretty great. And Lindsay and Colleen are both newer teachers, and they're fitting right in with the new, the new family. So, a couple of things that we've done using S-Back, since we got the S-Back early enough this last year, we have two math support classes, and so what we did was we used our S-Back scores and teacher recommendation to place students in there. It does take away an elective opportunity, so we wanted to be very careful with that. We also used S-Back scores and goals from IEPs to do two push-in math classes, where Dan Gorgas, our LRC teacher, is actually in a seventh grade class and in an eighth grade class co-teaching, in the hopes to give those students some more support for that. Our focus this year, obviously, has been opening the school, and so first I'd like to just publicly thank our maintenance and custodial crews. They worked so many hours and so hard just to get it so that we could be in there as teachers, and then continued with that so that our students could be there, and the school was ready for them when they got there. And it, for the most part, was absolutely ready for them when they got there. We did our first week a little differently. We had our eighth graders come in first. We wanted to create an opportunity for them to be mentors, and so they got to learn all the procedures, and had the tours of the school, and met with their teachers. And then on the second day, we had our sixth and seventh graders come in, and the AG teachers, advisory group teachers, asked if there were any volunteers in their classes who would like to stay and help out with the sixth and seventh graders, and there were probably 20 eighth graders who made the choice to stay and do that, so that was a really nice leadership opportunity for them, and they weren't even our leadership kids, so we're really happy that they chose to do that. And then we had special schedules on Thursday and Friday, just to do AG bonding. We had a great Together kickoff assembly on Friday where everybody was together. Trying to incorporate the sixth grade students in with the seventh and eighth graders has been interesting, because it's a change in the way that we think about how we run the school, and so making sure that they're part of, we used to have quads, where it would be, you know, a group of four teachers, and so now we have quints, so that we've got five, five groups, so that they're always included in all of our competitions, assemblies, all of that. So it's been, and I love having the sixth graders there. It just adds a completely different feel to the environment, so it's been great with those teachers, too. We've done four different open houses and tours so far this year. We had our first one for our Falcon families, thought it was important that they get to see it first, and then you guys came, and sorry, it was my birthday that day, so I was at Jerry Frank's eating cake while you guys were touring the school. But Christie did talk with me, and you guys asked some great questions, and I appreciate those, and so, if you have any in just a moment.
She did a great job. She showed us...
Yeah, she's, she's great. The merchants group toured the campus on the 5th, so I took them on a mini tour, showed them the different places, and then we had our first Friday community open house, and I think, Andy, you think there was probably 100 people?
Yeah, that's what I asked, Andy.
Yeah, 100 people came through. We had student-led tours, where we had volunteers who came, and then people could also do a self-guided tour. We had a nice little tour sheet for them. So those are the ones that we did, and we had several staff there to answer any questions, show off their rooms, you know, and I think most of the people that were there had been students at the high school. They wanted to see what it looked like now, so there were a lot of disappointed people when they saw the Area 38. So we call it Area 38 because it's the 1938 version of the building, yeah, and so it's Area 38, we can't go there, so there were a lot of people like, "Well, can't we..." No, it's, it's all right.
Any other comments you heard?
They were really surprised at how clean it looked. You know, that was a lot of it, like, "Oh my gosh, the last time I was in here," you know, I heard a lot of that, too. So, again, back to the maintenance and custodial crews doing just a fantastic job, making it our middle school and not the old high school, which is...
Well, the old MP area, that was impressive.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. So now that we're into the school year, and everybody's... So, now that we're into the school year, and everybody's in their rooms, we're starting off our staff professional development, we're going to continue to focus on the Danuson rubric, and this year teachers decided they would like to do the same one, so they can support each other. And then, working on how to stay connected, this campus is obviously a lot different than both Mark Twain and Robert Frost, where our sixth grade teachers are, were. And then, we've got a training plan to revisit the vision statement, now that we've got nine additional teachers, seven additional classified staff altogether, so we're going to revisit that, what does it mean to be a Silverton Middle School Falcon, and what are we trying to get our students to do when they leave us? You know, what, what, what does that student look like? So, we'll be doing that shortly, too. We had a couple of previous events that I wanted to just touch on. We had our safety walk audit, and it was kind of rainy, so we didn't have many parents at that one, but one of the auditors had shared that that, the drop-off in the morning was one of the better ones she'd seen at schools in similar locations, so it, thank you to the district office staff who helped for those first couple weeks, trying to get it all flowing, but she said it, compared to some of the other places she's seen, it was really smooth, so that was a nice thing to hear. There might be people who don't think that, but from what she'd seen in other places, that's what she felt. We also did a bike rodeo. One of the things that we heard was people were concerned about safety, bicyclists in the neighborhood, and so we did that on Thursday, the 6th, and the students seemed to enjoy it, so that was a nice thing. And then we have an upcoming event on November 14th, it's our Fourth Annual Veterans Day Assembly. Our leadership puts that together, and it's to honor the veterans of our community, so it's going to be from 1:50 to 2:50 in the gym, and you are all welcome to come by and see it.
Thank you. Were there any surprises you had to react to?
What day?
Can you give us, give some examples of things you had to work through?
Well, so, so we had, our PBAS team, they had, you know, perceived some time that they could come in and work before school started, and so we decided that there are certain areas that we don't want kids to go, and so we got some red spray paint, and we very carefully drew lines around to create a, a false hallway in some of those outer wings that are on the outside. So, that all happened, and then we had our little Falcon white, I don't know if you guys saw that on the tour?
Yeah.
And that was all done, and we're so proud of ourselves, and then they came in and did all the fire lines in red, and so now we're like, oh, which lines are they now going to know to follow? But they were smart enough to figure that. So, that was just one, like, oh, you know, and there's, unfortunately, been some things that we found in the field where they go play, and so we just collect them, and we have a little box of, you know, neat things that we find in the field. So, it's, you know, we just put up, we were finding that people were driving on the grass over by the tennis courts, so maintenance put some barriers up so that we could actually grow some grass out there, and so just, I mean, there's always things in a building, you know, that you go, oh, didn't think of that, so, so, yeah.
Okay.
Do the kids go out to the field by the tennis courts then?
Yes.
On that side?
So, we got the, finally got the portable basketball hoops delivered and put up. There's two of those in the tennis courts right now, and they're used all the time...
Oh, good, good.
When we're out there. And then rainy day, we go into the lower gym, and the PE classes are upstairs in the mezzanine, so we can actually have both things running at the same time, so it's nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, do you have any board reports this evening? And I don't believe there's any correspondence, so go ahead and open up with the second audience with visitors, would anybody like to address the board yet this evening? We'll move on to action item, we have one action item, to adopt the revisions to the charter agreement with Community Roots Charter School as a result of the school site change. We have a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? Halls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn the regular session and move to executive session for ORS 192 to 6602F to consider information or records that exempt from law from public inspection, consideration of sick leave bank requests. Thanks for coming.